Good evening and welcome to the January twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five regular session of Finley City Council. We'll start this evening's meeting with the roll call followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Mr. Baumann?
Here.
Mr. DeArmit?
Here.
Ms. Frishy?
Here.
Mr. Greeno?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Russell? Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
Mr. Wobser?
Present.
Mr. Russell informed me that he was going to be out of town and would appreciate being excused. Mr. Baumann? Second, Mr. Palmer, all those in favor of excusing Mr. Russell, say aye.
Aye.
May I pose nay? Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the previous city council minutes. Mr. Palmer, second, Mr. DeArmit, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the city council minutes of January seventh, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, they are accepted. We have no add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda, we have no proclamations, no recognition or retirement resolutions, we have no petitions, we have no oral communications, we have no written communications, and we do not have a contractor here to discuss any, any city business. We will then continue with reports of municipal officers and departments.
Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC, DBA Red Lobster number five eighty, located at two-three-four-zero Tiffin Avenue, Finley, Ohio, for a D-one, D-two, D-three, and D-six liquor permit. A check of the record shows no criminal record for those who applied.
Mr. Palmer?
Move that no objection be filed.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. All those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
May I pose nay? We will not file an objection.
Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control for Countryside Restaurant Incorporated, DBA Tokyo Japanese Steakhouse, located at eighteen-hundred Tiffin Avenue, Suite one-one-three, Finley, Ohio, for a D-five and D-six liquor permit. A check of the records shows no criminal record for those who applied.
Mr. Palmer?
Move that no objection be filed.
Second, Mr. DeArmit, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
May I pose nay? We will not file an objection.
Finley Municipal Court Activities Report for December twenty-twenty-four.
Report to be filed.
Letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Matt Cordonier regarding City of Finley revolving loan fund request for appropriation.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Jeremy Calb regarding Spring Lake sanitary upgrade request for appropriation.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Calb regarding construction funds for capital projects.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Jeremy Calb regarding runway seven-two-five rehabilitation AIP dash thirty-six.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Jeremy Calb regarding oil ditch cleaning.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from Police Chief James Mathias regarding Motorola Solutions Service Agreement.
Ms. Frishy?
I don't know where did I guess Rob, you're the one that wrote me the letter, or Chief did. What was the deal? I mean, you guys budgeted at the forty-nine. Did we have a contract and they're changing the agreement with us, or?
When the original quote came out earlier this year before the budget was done, that was the number that we had. And then as timing goes on, budget, or quote came, the invoice for the actual year came and there was a discrepancy with it. It's just as the timing of the budget being done based on when their pricings changed. So it, that was just the discrepancy.
So we can't get a multiple year?
This is a three-year contract.
So we had a three-year that ended and this is a new three-year? And so this will be our amount for three years with no possibility of changes?
Letter to be filed.
Letter from Airport Director Amanda McGee regarding Camp Software System Inc.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Christina Mern regarding One Ohio Funds.
Ms. Frishy?
Question for Mayor on this. One Ohio Funds, is this something they applied for through a city grant? Or is this part of the dollars that we were recouping from opioid?
Yeah, so the One Ohio program is the settlement on the opioid. And there are multiple different pots of money. There are some money that through the agreement is going to the state. And there are regions that people can apply to and then receive grants through their region, which is like through the state board. These dollars are specifically the ones that come directly to the city and then the county also gets a specific portion. So the City of Finley has over the last two or three years been receiving a little bit of money, a couple of times of years, and have accumulated about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And as we've been talking, myself, police, fire, Adamus Board, Health Department, we had made the decision about two years ago to just kind of hold, let some of the funds accumulate, and then determine how we wanted to disperse them. Taking advantage of federal and state programs before we utilize our local dollars. So Precious Toobie from the Adamus Board reached out and said, hey, our different organizations have been talking. Right now, we feel that the best use of these funds would be able to help support some of the Adamus programmings among their budget. And so when Rob, myself, I spoke with the chief and Chief Everly as well and said, is there any immediate need that we would want to put these dollars towards that qualify? And there are specific guidelines on how they can be utilized. And they said, you know, we'd like to have some money that we can help offset with educational programs in this school. But really, Adamus already does a lot of those different things. And so they were supportive of putting the funds towards the Adamus program. So we did not solicit other proposals from different entities. But at this point in time, I think this is a good use of the funds and really supports existing programs, rather than trying to make one-off programs, as well as it being a qualifying expense.
And this is the fund dollars that we used for the drug collection device that we're purchasing or did purchase? Didn't we use these funds?
No, we have not used any of our opioid abatement dollars. There are other funds that we get through the state, there are the drug rehab dollars that we get from different tickets that people pay. But these are specific to the opioid abatement dollars and these would be the first distribution of funds from that fund.
So these funds is hundred thousand, they want to use it at Finley City Schools for prevention specialists, family coach, mobile reporting stabilization. And these are things that Adamus is doing? Or they're supporting Finley City Schools? And they're already doing that in-house with their current staffing?
So these are existing programs that is a partnership between Adamus and then school staff. So sometimes agencies are coming in and helping assist with case management, et cetera. But then they also coordinate with in-school staff members that are interacting with the students on a regular basis.
Ms. Warnicki?
Is this hundred and fifty thousand the entire balance that we have at the moment?
At this point in time, yes, and it might have changed a little bit, that was from the December report.
Okay, thanks.
Letter to be filed.
Traffic Commission Minutes from December sixteen, twenty-twenty-four.
Minutes to be filed.
Precipitation and reservoir levels report from fourth quarter twenty-twenty-four.
Report to be filed. Committee reports.
The Planning and Zoning Committee, to whom was referred a request to continue September twelve, twenty-twenty-four, October ten, twenty-twenty-four, November fourteen, twenty-twenty-four, and December twelve, twenty-twenty-four discussions on cannabis dispensary zoning. We recommend that underlying zoning within proposed overlay districts to reflect C-two commercial zoning, modifications to proposed maps to ensure compliance with current C-two zoning and state statute adoption of overlay zoning district ordinance.
Mr. DeArmit?
Make a motion to approve the report.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay. Or wait, I'm sorry, am I supposed to take a voice vote on that? I'm sorry. Aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. DeArmit?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Ms. Greeno, or Mr. Greeno, sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
The committee report is adopted. Denise normally would have kicked me under the table to tell me I made that mistake, so I just want you to know. Ow, geez, sorry. Okay.
The Planning and Zoning Committee, to whom was referred a request to continue discussions from the December twelve, twenty-twenty-four Planning and Zoning Committee meeting regarding an onsite parking requirements for new residential development, we recommend to continue discussions.
Mr. Baumann?
Move for adoption of the committee report.
Second, Mr. DeArmit, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the committee report, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. DeArmit?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Committee report is adopted.
And Mr. Baumann, did I say Mr. Baumann?
No.
Aye.
Sorry.
I'm going to kick her.
Yeah. The Water and Sewer Committee met on January ten, twenty-twenty-five to discuss the Spring Lake Sanitation System Project. We recommend an appropriation of two hundred thousand dollars for the Spring Lake Subdivision Sanitary Project in order to execute contracts with the understanding that the Ohio EPA will reimburse the city in the Ohio EPA new fiscal year.
Mr. DeArmit?
Move to approve the committee report.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion, Ms. Frishy?
I'm just curious of why we did not do an MOU on this. I mean, so far, the EPA has been providing and reimbursing, but the money is not there, we're going to take two hundred thousand out of our water department, assuming they're going to pay us in July when they get their new funding, but we don't even have an MOU. Why wouldn't the committee have asked for an MOU to make sure we are dotting i's and crossing t's? I don't know if that's for head of the committee or grant's not here. So I don't know if anybody else can answer why that wasn't in the committee report.
Mr. DeArmit?
It was never discussed, Holly.
Do you feel that that's important, though, that we should have?
It's not a bad idea.
I do not think that it's, that it's really needed. I don't think that if we can't trust the EPA on this, I mean, they've already put out how many millions of dollars onto this project. They know our stance on this project, that the city will not pay any money towards this whole project. All we are doing is letting this project move forward instead of waiting until July to start the bidding and stuff. So I don't see that, in my opinion only, I don't see that we need a MOU on this.
Mayor?
We also do have email correspondence from the CFO, is that his position, like the CFO of the EPA? So I think that's, that's pretty good documentation.
And another reason why, so, why we didn't go get that additional two hundred thousand as we were bidding, we were kind of right on that line where we didn't know exactly where bid pricing was going to come in. So talking with EPA and stuff, we were like, let's see what the bid pricing comes in. We seen it came in, we need additional two hundred thousand, been in communication with them since the beginning, told them that we do not want to put any city funds against this, but it's just how their fiscal year starts compared to ours, how construction schedules start, how long pump stations and stuff take. We want to get this done this year, so that's how we keep it moving. But as Randy was saying, they have been great to work with, they have followed up on everything they have, and we do have communications with them, dating and everything, going back forth. And I even talked to him Friday afterwards, told them what happened, they said, great, we are continuing working on it, we'll find those funds for you.
Mr. Hellman?
Yeah, I concur with this and agree that we ought to do it, but I had a question when I was looking this over. Is this the end of the project? And I mean, it seems like we've been tinkering with this for?
Yeah, so this is the second and final phase. What, I mean, to give a short or a long story short, what happened is we thought we could line the whole system. We hammered the whole thing, once we got in there, I did not feel comfortable lining it because in ten years, I feel like we would have a problem then, we're fixing it. Working with the EPA, why it's taking so long is we're redoing the whole system, all new line, all new pumps. And then we also had to size, so if anything's fancy to the west, we have, we have capacity ready to go. We had to push it deeper and different requirements. So it's just, it's a lot of going out surveying and then all of a sudden you find a line, you got to move some stuff around, working with their entity. So it's, it's taken a long time, but this is the finish line.
Good.
Mr. Greeno?
I just want to make a comment that I think that by not lining it and making sure that the city is taking over a brand-new system is very beneficial to the city instead of trying to fix it and then fix it later, like Jeremy says. So let's get a whole new system, let's let the EPA pay for it all, and let's move forward.
Ms. Frishy?
Yeah, we have been working on this project a long time and I think Jeremy is right, to get everything as a new system is correct. I guess for me, without having that documentation, I wouldn't be able to approve that. And my good conscience of having an MOU or documentation that guarantees, not saying that they wouldn't do it, but a lot of things can change and happen. And we're affronting two hundred thousand and we, you know, if we get this done, Jeremy, this year, are we guaranteeing to have them on our system and recouping all those costs as well on the sewer that they haven't been paying and so forth?
Yeah, so one, once the line's done, they're on our system. And it'll be, once we accepted the system, it'll be turned over us. And, and that's kind of, that's with this discussion that we're having, to understand the costs that are with that. So we're keeping track of all those usagees because the EPA understands that, you know, we didn't want to front all that money. But it's, it's a different situation for the homeowners out there because they are on a private system, EPA's taking over, not us. So they are working with us on those, on that end as well.
What date frame are we looking forward to have this project done, if we're having it done in twenty-five?
Well, it depends on when the funds get appropriated, but the pumps are eight to nine months out. So that's why I want to get moving on this as soon as I can. Talking with the contractor, if they can get those pumps ordered in February, they're expecting to be done completely with the project by the end of November.
All those in favor of the committee reports, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. DeArmit?
Aye.
Committee report is adopted. Legislation, we will start with resolutions.
Second reading for Resolution number zero-zero-two-dash-twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, next.
Oh, am I supposed to read the whole thing? Am I supposed to read all of that?
Sure.
Okay. A resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year twenty-twenty-five pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section three-two-one-point-three-four. First reading for Resolution number zero-zero-four-dash-twenty-twenty-five. A resolution approving the expenditures made by the auditor's office on the attached list of vouchers which either exceed the purchase order or were incurred without a purchase order, exceeding the statutory limit of three thousand dollars, all in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, section five-seven-zero-five-point-four-one-D.
Mr. Wobser?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance, or I'm sorry, the resolution, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. DeArmit?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Ordinances.
Third reading for ordinance number twenty-twenty-four-dash-one-five-zero. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the City of Finley, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the eighteen-hundred Tiffin Avenue Access Utilities Project, number three-one-nine-four-seven-three-zero-zero, appropriating and transferring funds thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. DeArmit?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-four-dash-one-fifty.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. Ms. Frishy?
Jeremy, what exactly are you going out for bid on specifically?
So I don't, we are not going out to bid for this, but I have it in there for language if we have to go out to bid. We're working with the developer on this. But I've had instances where we were going to work with some and then we weren't going out to bid. So I wanted to have that in, language in there just in case we ever have to go out to bid for anything. So it's just simple, make sure we have that covered. But as I stated before in the first reading, that this was, we were working with the developer as part of this project on this for them to do that work within there.
But what are we doing? I, I guess, here's where I'm at. It comes across that it's a water project. It comes across that it's widening the ingress, egress, is it croy drive? But what it comes down to for me is works, we are assisting with demolition for the benefit of a developer. And, and I, it hasn't gone to water and sewer, it didn't come to appropriation. And you're not really telling me what we are exactly working on. Because, you know, if we have to, if we have to cap off a line because the building is no longer there, that's a normal thing that we do, that's not a big deal. Typically, when a developer needs to bring in infrastructure that's at their cost and they come to us, we don't take the infrastructure to them. So I, so that's your water situation. The sewer situation on the storm side, or on the sewer side, seems to be specific to private property. So are we just demoing and tearing up the lot and helping out a developer who at the end, the mayor said that they will more than likely be selling the buildings over, or the building of the new business over to that building? Or are, what are we doing? It's not been clear this whole time.
Is that directed at anybody specific?
I guess Jeremy and I are having a conversation, I don't know.
Thank you.
So I'll start with the access. So it's on to Tiffin Avenue. What that is, is we are moving the existing drive that is, kind of has that island that makes you go in as a T, relocating that down to the west about a hundred and fifty foot. Well, with that, you're moving the sign, you're moving the island, you're moving the entrance, you're creating a new entrance. That was a request from the city to make that a safer corridor down through there. Coming out of that is, it's too close to other drives. This is a good opportunity to open those up so we have better stopping distance within there. That's an established drive already, so as the property owner, if you were the property owner, say your house, and you're going to do a renovation to your house, and then we as the city come to you and say, well, okay, you're doing the renovation to your house, but I want you to move your drive over ten feet. I mean, you're not, you're not going to want to do that, you already have an established drive. So we're working with them on that to make sure that that's a safe corridor down through there. We're creating site distances, we're creating stopping distances within there because this is going to be a redeveloped area, that way it's safer down through there. The water, as I stated before, we, with the reconfiguration of the building, we're going to be moving some hydrants through there because of the fire protection that's needed through there. We're going to be on the backside cleaning up the, where the service lines are. Right now, there's two lines that are going in, there's multiple fittings within there, we're going to clean that up. So it's one line going in for their fire suppression and for their domestic, that's on the backside. On the front, like I said, we're moving some hydrants and stuff. We're abandoning a old service line that is coming off there, there. But when we're tearing everything up, that line was put in by us in two thousand or so. We want to make sure all that within there, we don't have multiple fittings, we don't have high maxes there, we don't have anything that is in the future going to cause us problems. So cleaning up that area within there. The sewer, when Kane's tied into that area, that sanitary, there is a lot of grease in there. With that, we want to make sure, okay, yes, that is a private, but within that area, that is also, if that grease gets pushed to our line, that's our problem to have as well. So if, while they're in there cleaning up that area, working on that area, that was another request by us to make sure all that is good, so that way we don't have any problems in the future with any of our lines down, down through there.
Mr. Wobser?
Jeremy, I have two questions. The, you mentioned the sightlines with relocating the entrance and the signage there. So we're going to change, essentially change the traffic pattern coming off of Tiffin and going back on to Tiffin, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so that, that main driveway on Tiffin Avenue there.
Yeah, understood. And, you know, we've had conversations about that because of the increased traffic with Starbucks on the other side and now Kane's and if we ever get the get and go or whatever going there on the corner. But we talked about having the state look at some ideas on how to redevelop that whole corridor because of the increased traffic and the fact that it's a state route, correct?
Correct.
So are we, I guess my question is, are we doing a good thing by moving that entranceway now prior to that study?
I, I think either way, as part, so as far as that study, I actually got an email from the state today saying that they're going to be resubmitting that. Last year, they were filled up on their consultant, so they're going to be resubmitting that. So we should be hearing within the next couple of weeks, months, or whatever, from them on where that's at. But I think either way, I don't think we're going to lose out if we move that. I still think even if anything is done down through there, moving that drive, creating more separation from all those other drives and kind of equal distance will actually help that area down through there. You know, you're, you, like you were saying, with Starbucks across, what that, what we're doing is kind of lining that up with Starbucks across. So you have less conflict points. You know, when you move something off, how cars move and stuff, you're creating more conflict points. So when you have them across from each other, how they're moving in through there, it creates less. So creating a better separation through there is going to help all those drives, even if anything happens on Tiffin.
Okay, that's good. And just my second question, I want to understand, we're, how much money were we asking for here?
Two hundred.
Two hundred thousand. And I'm trying to understand, you said we're not going to bid anything out, so we're going to do all the work ourselves? I'm trying to understand where the money's going.
Working with the developer on that while they're in there for the developer to do that.
So we're going to pay the developer?
Yeah.
Is that a normal thing that we would do? How do we know what we're getting for our money, I guess?
Yeah, so, so two things. One, when Jeremy was describing all of the different things that are going on with the changes, I just want to, he talks we because he's a team-oriented guy. Again, the developer's doing all of that work, but it's things that we have requested. And then our infrastructure, it's the coordination. So we will have to still work with the developer. It really is a timing of whether the developer does it or the new property owner does it and how they are managing that. So we'll work with the auditor's office to determine, they'll have to provide us documentation of the work, et cetera. It's definitely not going to cover the cost of obviously the associated expenses that they're going to be doing. This is just to help offset some of the work that we had specifically requested occur. And while they're in there tearing it up, they're able to improve things that would have otherwise cost us more if we then had to go in and do it on our own.
Yeah, I think the overall. okay, I'm good.
Mr. Baumann?
I, I think, Jeremy, you mentioned the grease situation, the possibility of a grease situation, support for this is kind of highlighted by what happened last week on Trenton Avenue, we had to tear up a main thoroughfare because of, for me, this prevents that from happening in the future.
Mr. Stachek?
Well, all things considered, I'm hearing a couple of things for the first time tonight, my concern here would be that without a detailed list and an accounting with regard to how much we're reimbursing the developer for each and every item, two things need to happen. If council's not going to look at that detailed list, I would like that detailed list with the supporting documentation to my office prior to expending a nickel, so that we can make sure if there are things that we would be concerned that it looks like it's for a proper public purpose, we could bring it to council through my office and have you look at it before rather than after, and then the second thing I'd like to know is what assurances do we have that the developer's not sliding over other costs to us, and how would we know that? Because from all, everything I'm hearing, there's no accountability to know that the developer's not sliding other costs over to us, not that I'm saying they would, how do we show they didn't to the general public and the taxpayer and the, in this case, yeah, the income taxpayer that paying for it?
Ms. Frishy?
So, I mean, I think my concern is, is valid and straightforward now that we are paying the developer directly, and the things that we're being told, Jeremy, by you, you know, moving hydrants and this and that, and now you're telling me that we're paying the developer, so the work that our city folks are going to be doing with moving a hydrant or something are typical expenses to cap things and so forth that they wouldn't be paying for anyway, so to me, this just clearly came out tonight that we're paying a developer to do a project on private property, the grease situation, we had that discussion at the prior council meeting or two before, Brian, where those, we have no issue in that line currently, that line comes all the way up to Tiffin Avenue, it crosses over and heads to Queenswood, and that line is lined, so that integrity of that line is not having an issue and we have not had grease phone call concerns on the public property side. Everything that we're talking about here is on private property, I have no problem capping a line, moving a hydrant, but typically when a developer comes to do a project, they get told what's required of them to be approved and moved forward, and it's not the city jumping in and helping row their boat financially, and for that reason, especially after the discussion tonight, I feel like we got a little bit of, I don't know what kind of discussion on, on what this project actually is, but I don't think we are there yet to be approving it.
Mr. Greeno? Mayor?
I, I just wanted to clarify, first of all, we can't give you, we, I, I was trying to pull it up among my papers, we certainly can put it as a not to exceed up to the $200,000 because we will definitely receive the specific invoices related to the work that we have asked them to perform, so that we have that clarification. The reason I can't tell you the specific process of how the money will flow is because it determines how, when they transfer ownership of the property, which entity the property moves under, so it's just very convoluted and I understand this is something different than what we normally do, however, it's different than what we normally do, not because there's some hidden process that we're trying to get money to a developer, but instead, we're trying to coordinate development that has occurred in that area, and if you recall, the city planning commission meetings over the past year, when there's been multiple different developments going on in that area, we had said, we really would like to see this occur, well, we're requesting something occur on one person's property that is helping benefit another person's property, and when they were getting their site plan, we can't force their neighbor to make changes to the property just because it's what we want to make this work better. Sometime in the city planning, you have to say, hey, this is what needs to occur and we're going to work as a team to make it happen, and additionally, just because you keep saying that this is private property doesn't make it private property, this is a, a public utility within a private property that is in our easement that we are ultimately responsible for, if the pipe blows up, we are the one responsible for maintenance of this, so, and that is, I think, a misrepresentation of, of what we're trying to do here.
Mr. Greeno?
I would assume if we are paying a contractor to do this, that we would have somebody from the city inspecting what the work is being done, that it's being done properly.
Yeah, all components of those will be inspected by our inspector.
Okay.
Mr. Wobser?
I'm in favor of the, the, the overall project, and this needs to get done, and how we get it done, I, is, that was in the details here, Mayor, I appreciate the idea of having an NTE in this, and so I would, I can make a motion to include NTE, not to exceed language into the legislation, so that we don't end up going way over or something, we run into something, Jeremy, you know, who knows what the, what, if we're not doing the work, right, they could run into a lot of things, I just want to make sure that the cities were only on the hook for 2K, 200K, so I'd make a motion to put not to exceed language into the legislation.
Second, Mr. Palmer, all those in favor of the amendment as described say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
Mr. Neymar?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Diarm, or, Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmet?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
The amendment is included. Mr. Stachek?
Here's two things real quick, one, I have no idea what that's just accomplished, if you break something and it's more than 200 grains, you're going to have to fix it, I mean, that's common sense, however, the comment that the mayor said, I can't say how the money will flow at the time of the adoption of the legislation leads to an issue for me as your fiscal officer, and now I'm going to say, I'm going to need to have a conversation with Mr. Feigner to discuss this in great detail prior to you or me paying anything on this, because we need to know how, where, when, to who, why, and what that money is flowing for before you appropriate a nickel.
Mr. Feigner?
And I was going to add, Jeremy, I would imagine, obviously this is going to include a contract, that with the concerns that council's raising here tonight, that I would have a chance to review that contract, I don't know your normal procedure, but it would be something I'd want to see, and I'm, I'm sure the auditor would want to see it as well to make sure that we're covering all bases for a project like this.
Jim, the, this project was the one that we discussed in, in your guys' office prior to the new year, it was originally in the demolition project on that, that we discussed, and at that time, we kind of discussed what the project was about, how we're going to do that, but, you know, if, if, how you're wanting the process of the rempayment and all that kind of stuff, I would appreciate that time if you would have stated all that stuff, because I would have had all that stuff laid out prior too, but this was a project that we discussed beforehand, before I started moving capital funds into it, that's why we renamed it the 1800 Tiffin Avenue instead of something else, but I, we can work with you on what you're needing and see what you want, but I just wanted to clarify, this is the one we were talking about with you, with yourself, Ginger and me in your guys' office.
Mr. Wobser?
Rob, would you suggest that we table this until we get the new, the contract and you have a chance to review it, and then we can approve the legislation at that point in time? How do you think this should take place?
I imagine I'm, I'm the Rob you're talking to?
I'm sorry, our new lob attorney, Mr. Feigner, Mr. City Attorney.
Um, I don't know what stage it's in, Jeremy, if you've, if a contract is forthcoming, if, if they've got one that's, someone's got some framework for or how that's going to go, it would, as long as there's a chance to review it before we're entering into it and it satisfies the legal end of it or an accounting end of it, that, that would be my recommendation, I don't know if you need to, to table all this, but the contract needs to be reviewed by the right people involved.
Council's part of the right people, I would think.
I'm sorry, did you have some, okay?
I would say that council's part of the right people, that we need to understand the contract too, Rob, so wouldn't you agree we should table it then?
If, if council wants to do that, I just don't know how quick you can get a, these people, if they're drafting the contract or if we're drafting it, that would be fine.
Mayor?
So, the legislation before you is stating that you are supporting the administration to work through, putting together a contract that would commit the city of expending funds not to exceed $200,000 to get infrastructure that is public infrastructure improved as part of coordination with an outside entity, beyond the legal mumbo jumbo of, yes, it's all going to be for a proper public purpose, it's not going to exceed 200, we're going to have to complete inspection, all of which we'll have to work through, that is, that is kind of an administrative function, not a legislative function, you are saying, yes, we support you in your efforts to do that.
I agree.
Ms. Frishy?
So, what our ordinance says, it's an ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, city engineer to advertise for bid and to enter into contracts with 1800 Tiffin Avenue for Access Utility Project, now, you just used the word in here, demo is what you were originally calling the project, where then came out with that this project's just reimbursing a developer, and we have, we have no projects, so you're talking about utilities, basic stuff from the sounds of it, that we normally do, and then we're going to be handing over 200,000, that we don't even have, what are, I mean, and you just said we aren't even going out for bid, just in case we might, this, this ordinance is gibberish, and what we're doing is wrong with city tax dollars, and then, Mayor, you just said to me, you're not going to, you're not sure who's going to own the property, or so you telling me this is possibly going to be a CRA Port Authority project as well?
Just for a comment, I think you're quoting the, the agenda?
No.
Paragraph, or are you quoting, as she did, the actual ordinance?
This is the ordinance, you want me to read the whole thing? I'd be glad to.
No.
Okay, so, it is what it is, but is it a CRA potential Port Authority project on top of using city tax dollars for 200,000, because that's what you're potentially inferring?
Well, that wasn't what I was referencing, but I would assume that an investment of this scale would apply to take advantage of a reinvestment area abatement, just as any other project of this kind would, again, the, as Jeremy mentioned, we can change the language to say, to enter into bids and/or contracts where necessary, because again, we included that in case something does come up, but that is just standard language, we can certainly adjust that, again, we are focused on the private infrastructure part, yes, we did have funds at the end of the year in our ARPA fund, and given these dollars, we're going to be focused on infrastructure, which was a qualifying expense, we did discuss pulling them out of that fund since we no longer were using the demolition program, so that's where the reference for the demolition funds comes up, however, in conversations with Ginger in the auditor's office, she said that to get the funds expended by the end of the year, this was not going to work, so as you may recall, at the end of the year, we diverted those funds towards the airport project, which allowed us to make sure that those funds were appropriately expended, so that is the reference to the demo, you are correct that I stated that I don't know who the specific entity is going to be, because this is how development works, sometimes one person owns a property, then they work to transfer it to another entity, and we are all coordinating and working together to see an investment occur in our community, again, it doesn't matter who owns that property, that does not make that public infrastructure no longer public, so the improvements, regardless of who is owning it at the time we sign a contract, which is why a specific contract is not coming forward to you, that is why I can't state the specific person, we will have to work through the process and determine the specific LLC that does the work, and if they have us invoiced by a contract, there's a lot of moving parts here, I apologize that you feel that we are not providing enough clarity, it's complex, but I can assure you that we will appropriately manage the funds, oversee the project and verify, and the developer will pay for appropriate movement of hydrants, et cetera, as they would, this, these funds are estimates based off of Jeremy's knowledge on what we expect that we have asked them to do over and above and beyond what they would have had to do for this development for the benefit of the entire corridor.
Ms. Warnicki?
Do we have a motion and a second on this?
We voted. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Ms. Warnicki?
I wanted to know, do we have a motion and a second on the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, then I would say call the question.
Yeah, just, we voted to amend it, which was approved.
Okay, I'm sorry, didn't know if we did or not.
And so the actual ordinance as amended needs to be a first and a second and then voted on, okay, is that, am I correct? Mr., just a second, Ms. Frishy, I, I, I see him with his hand up, I will call on him, you're not running this meeting and you never will. Quiet. Mr. W, I was asking Mr. Wobser a question, was that my understanding that you amended it?
Correct, so what we'll do, we have, we had an original motion to approve as was, now we've amended it, so when we vote, after discussion's over, it'll be as amended.
Thank you. Mr. Stachek?
Hey, thanks, two things, I guess, that go directly to this and quickly, one, I'm very concerned, but this is the exact issue you have when your economic development is private and not public, all tax dollars should be invested in a very public, very transparent way, I'm very concerned about the comments I heard tonight, but Jeremy, to the point, I appreciate you, I appreciate you coming down the office, and I had no issues with that, and I'm sorry you feel a little bit blindsided by this, and it wasn't my intent, it's just with the, the way this evolved, but to that, is there any heartburn, what is anything, can any damage be done by this waiting two weeks so that the law director and I can get through this and make sure everything's okay, and then if there's any other issues regarding that transparency and information we need, that we can, we can get that taken care of at our next meeting, which is exactly two weeks from now, we don't have the extra week in between, so we're not talking about a lot of time.
Mr. Neymar?
Real quick, I think, isn't this what started like, month and a half, two months ago, and somebody on that side of the room said if we don't invest this 200,000, the developer or the future tenant could back out?
Mayor?
I do not believe that has been stated, I know that it's an important part of the project occurring is, from our standpoint, the improvements to the area, but I don't believe that it is a deal killer, however, again, I think it's the wrong message to a developer to say, these are the things that we need you to see, and again, in coordination, this is, for, if you go back and look at the city planning commission meeting and conversations for the, over a year, we've been talking with each of those different developments and parcelling out, hey, we want to see this shifted, well, that's not my property, I can't have that shifted, so that's the coordination, no, we can delay this, this is fine, I think the problem, we can work with the auditor and law director to try to put together, I think there's still going to be some blanks within the contract, again, because it's going to depend which entity between developer, new owner, et cetera, ends up managing the project, managing the workflow, I don't have that level of detail for you at this point in time.
Mr. Wobser?
Mayor, I appreciate those comments, and Jim, your comments too, I believe in the project, I believe the project needs to move forward, that development needs to get done, we've been working on this for decades, thank you, and it's unfortunately coming through in a little unusual way, however, so what I would ask, Mayor, is that keep us apprised as things continue to move forward as much as you possibly can without violating any NDAs, which I suspect there's going to be some of these involved at this, with this, up to a certain point, and then, Jeremy, I was obviously working closely with the auditor's office to get Ginger everything she needs to be able to pay the bills, this needs to get done, as long as the money ultimately gets spent on things that we would have done ourselves anyway, I'm good, that's it.
Ms. Frishy?
Because the mayor said that she had no problem waiting two weeks and working with all parties on the administrative side, I make a motion to table.
Motion to table is denied like, due to lack of a second. Hearing no other discussion, I will entertain a motion for the, as amended, Mr. Palmer?
I move that the ordinance number 2025-150 as amended be adopted.
Second, Mr. Baumann, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Neymar?
Nay.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki?
Aye.
Mr. Wobser?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mr. Diarmet?
Aye.
Ms. Frishy?
Nay.
Mr. Greeno?
Aye.
Mr. Hellman?
Aye.
So, it's, uh, 7-2, how's that go, Rob, 7-2, no problem?
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Seven-two. How's that go, Rob, seven-two, no problem?
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance number 2025-004, an ordinance amending chapter 149.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio, entitled Airport Advisory Board, thus repealing ordinance number 2003-119, and all ordinances and or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance number 2025-005, an ordinance authorizing to utilize awarded community development block grant, block grant funding, as well as appropriate, sorry, as well as appropriate and transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Warnicki.
Um, I would make a motion to suspend the rules and do our second and third reading tonight, because they're trying to get this loan done, I believe the closing, anticipated closing date is January 31st.
Second, Mr. Welbser, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Welbser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmet.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Neymar.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance number 2025-005, ordinance number 2025-005.
Ms. Warnicki.
Move to approve ordinance number 2025-005.
Second, Mr. Diarmet, discussion, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Welbser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmet.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Neymar.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance number 2025-006, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance number 2025-007, an ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio, to enter into contracts for construction for various projects in accordance with the previous capital plans, appropriating and transferring funds for said expenditures, and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance number 2025-008, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number, first reading for ordinance number 2025-009, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance number 2025-010, an ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance number 2025-011, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director for the city of Findlay, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Camp Software, Inc., for the implementation of a point-of-sale and inventory management software system to be utilized by the city of Findlay Airport and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance number 2025-012, an ordinance establishing, establishing the use and monetary accounting of road salt between the city of Findlay and Findlay City Schools and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Mr. Feigner, like to talk to that ordinance.
Just a little background on this ordinance, um, down the road, you may see similar ordinances like this, um, I've been working with, with Rob Martin and Auditor Stashack on some of these things, about how the city funds are used to help out neighboring communities or villages, or in this situation, the Findlay City Schools, and things that take longer time to do, or in account for, it was my opinion, in, in speaking with both these gentlemen, that, you know, an ordinance be used to memorialize it, that way, instead of being told down the road, that's the way we always did it, we have it memorialized, so, uh, other folks taking these seats and these positions, um, know how it's been done in the past, and that it's still in effect to be done that way. This is a contribution, uh, to help the Findlay City Schools, they don't have salt storage, and so, we basically store it, we provide it, they pay us back, what we've done is memorializing that procedure to the satisfaction of the auditor, and still at the same time, you know, allowing, uh, the service safety director to, uh, to be a good neighbor, and in these situations, uh, help folks out, that's what this is about, and we may see more down the road.
Ms. Frishy.
Rob, talking about this ordinance, since you went into detail, so, I didn't understand, like, what do we charge them, I mean, we, we don't have an ordinance, like, how do we determine the rate, or, or, okay, Rob, number two.
Well, he was here first, so, Rob.
I, did you want me to? So, I didn't want to interrupt, but we're still figuring out what, Rob, the talk when, um, so, the process was, um, they would come when they needed salt for their, their parking lots and sidewalks and whatnot, we would keep track, and a delivery truck of salt will not deliver anything less than one load, which is essentially 25 ton, we would keep track until we hit that threshold, we would call the director of operations at Findlay City Schools, they would in fact call the vendor, and would then pay the vendor directly, they would deliver that load to us, so, it was, it was essentially paying us back for the salt that they got from us, and due to, to what, uh, Law Director Feigner did point out, due to transition and things, this process has been in place before our actual current superintendent worked there, so, this has been going on for years, so, they said, just because of the transition of people, let's make sure it's memorialized, and people understand what the process is.
But I don't understand.
What don't you understand about that?
I'm asking what the, so, so they've been doing this for years, so what have they been paying, like, what's?
It's based on what the current rate of salt is, when they actually have to buy it.
Well, we buy it.
They, so when they use 25 ton, it could take one year, or it could take five years, based on the weather events that they have to actually cover. Once they hit 25 ton, they call up the vendor and say, I need a load, which is 25 ton, delivered to Findlay City Salt Barn.
So, they're paying their own salt and putting it in our barn.
And then they say, it cost X, and then the Findlay City Schools pays X to the vendor, and that's it.
So, they're not paying us.
Correct.
That's where I was trying to figure out where we were.
Okay. Sorry, thought it was clear, my bad.
I got it.
You're okay.
Mr. Stashack.
That's the history of it, the way we're going to do it, is, we're buying the salt, each load, there's going to be a load ticket, the load ticket will be signed by a street department employee, as well as a city official who pick, or, excuse me, a school official who picks up the load, so they know how many loads it makes up, the tonnage, so they will be tracking that at the street department, and it will be billed monthly during season when the salt. But that's the new process, so, Rob, very accurately described what was going on, I had a great conversation with the schools, and talking with the schools, um, I, I have documented when they got loads that they have not paid for yet, or have not replaced to us, so as part of this, we'll be billing them for those loads that are unpaid from 2000, I think 20, they go back, 2021, uh, and 22, there's no load last year, and no load, I think, the year before, and moving forward, the way we believe it'll be, we think there'll only be invoices to the school in probably December, January, February, March, possibly April, and then talking to the school treasurer is in the same position there that I am here, in terms of fiscal responsibility, that is their preferred way, so they will no, they will no longer be buying those loads, we buy it, we buy it at our price, because there's another reason here, and it's a historic reason, the city was sued, uh, very seriously by our salt vendor a number of years ago, prior to this administration, and prior to the last administration, because we violated the terms of our supply agreement, and they do watch us on it, they wanna make sure we're buying, and any salt that goes into our barn comes from us, and it comes under our contract, under the city's contract terms, so it's very important that we do that as well, so there's some ancillary issues here, but that's the way it'll work, that's what we agreed to, and that's what the process is gonna read.
Ms. Frishy.
So, I'm, so we are billing them, so my question, all I'm trying to get to is, do we need an ordinance that says, here's the rate we're charging, cuz we get our salt rate, and then we lock that in, and we buy it, we don't have?
No.
To do any of that?
It's.
Correct, I just didn't know if we had to give that to them in a contract, that we needed to have an ordinance, nobody says we need an ordinance for that.
Okay, old business, Mr. Greeno.
Yes, I'd like to reconsider ordinance number 2025-009, uh, the oil ditch cleaning, Jeremy, I believe that this is just, we have just a little bit more money that we need for the city's portion of the cleaning inside of the city, this is something that's been going on since 2014, was, so I think it's time to keep moving on this, um, I would like to have this, uh, ordinance give its second and third reading, so we can get this through tonight, so that the county commissioners can move forward with whatever they need to do.
To do this right, we got a motion to reconsider. Second, Mr. Welbser, all in favor of, um, reconsidering 225-009, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Welbser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmet.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Neymar.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Okay, now you can, uh, make a motion to suspend.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules of council be suspended, and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Baumann, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. Diarmet.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Neymar.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Welbser.
Aye.
Now, you can make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I can make a motion to approve the ordinance number 2025-009.
The clerk, she's asking if she needs to read it.
Give the second and third reading.
Oh, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Ordinance number 2025-009, ordinance number 2025-009.
My mistake. Okay.
Now, are you ready for?
Yes, I am.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance number 2025-009.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion, uh, Ms. Frishy.
Um, Jeremy, two questions, one, are they two public hearings yet, or are they through that with the commissioner's office, and then the second question being, is this, we're paying for the entirety, like we've been doing for Dazzle Ditch, and whatever the newest ditch was that we just did, that went to the north?
Howard Road.
Howard Road, this is, this is us paying for everything?
So, don't say, everything inside the city limits, so, everything inside the city limits, this is, just like Howard Street, um, this is, they're ready to schedule the fi- final hearing, we have 170,000 in there, their estimate was 176 and some change, we gotta make sure we have that amount in our account, so with that way, we can tell the commissioners that, so that's what the, that is, but their, their estimate is for what's inside the city limit.
Mayor, hang on, Mayor.
And, to that point, this is for them to be able, in that final mailing, they typically include those dollar amounts, so this will allow them to send the mailing stating that the city portion has been covered, um, and then I'll just add, though, we're still a little ways away, I think we'll do a groundbreaking for this project, because, for the love of God, since I've been here, every month I email them to get this done, so it looks pretty crummy, so I'm excited to get it done.
Ms. Frishy.
So, should we, since we're gonna start moving forward, it seems, cuz we are, we set our precedence, do we need to have any legislation that just says, going forward when we're doing ditches, that we're gonna do the initial clean, or that, is that worth having, or necessary, I guess, or necessary is what I'm looking for, do we need that going forward?
Mayor.
From my perspective, well, one, we've almost got each of the dish, ditches petition, which has been something we've been trying to do, I think it should still be considered on a case-by-case basis, because that allows you to determine if it's all the project city, a portion of it, if there's some properties that maybe have been a problem child, or some, you know, I think case-by-case is really the way to go.
All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye if your name is called, those opposed, name.
Mr. Diarmet.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Neymar.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Welbser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted. Other old business. New business. Mr. Baumann.
I, I guess I just wanted to take a, a minute here, um, as many of you know, um, and I don't wanna step on the mayor's toes, um, but, a- as many of you know, Pastor Terry Macbeth passed away, um, and like I said, I wanted to take a moment just to, to kinda honor him. You see, he and my, my papal, um, and that's what you call it when you're raised by hillbillies, and please, I use that term lovingly, we're best friends. Both pastors, both chaplains of their respective cities, um, together again. If I could leave you with one thing tonight, I would, this evening, I would, I would, I remember asking, um, Pastor Macbeth at, you know, some point through the years, how are you, how you doing, and he simply replied, I'm happy, and folks, that was Terry Macbeth. He was happy, he loved, he loved our PD, he loved his city, um, and, and just an all-around good guy, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor.
No, I, I appreciate you sharing that, he certainly has been somebody special to me, when, when my father passed away, and, and he was there, uh, certainly as a support, and I know, has been there for many members of, of our police department and the city, as well as the community at large, so he will be dearly missed, and he, uh, had a, I'll, I'll miss his phone calls, Dan, I'm praying for you, kid, so, we each have our own memories, for sure.
Thank you. Other new business. Mr. Welbser.
I don't know, I apologize, I missed the last meeting, I don't know if we recognize the passing of Bob Nichols, um, and was a week or, so, almost two weeks ago now, it was after our last meeting, he was a city councilman, a longtime teacher in the community, he was my phys ed teacher at Glenwood, uh, just a couple years ago, and, um, he was a good man, I will tell you that his, uh, relationship with, uh, me, when we were in school, was very not good, from the standpoint of, he was a football coach, did not understand why somebody like myself would wanna swim versus being a football player, so he and I had our falling out, until, um, he came to my house for a fundraiser, and I was able to, uh, show him my award room, and how things worked out well for me, and he looked at me, and said, you made the right call, so, Bob was a good man, uh, we had our disagreements when we were, when I was younger, but, uh, he really did a lot of great things for the city, him and, uh, uh, Mr. Rail, uh, developers and whatnot, and I just wanted to recognize his passing.
So, on that note, when I joined city council 14 years ago, he was on council at that time, uh, Doc Slough was on council at that time, um, trying to think who else, they, we called him the Glenwood Gang, and got to know Bob pretty well, my wife worked with him for a number of years, we did things socially, um, he was a good mentor, right? He said, you, the one thing I remember him saying is, so, you think you got it tough, you can imagine staying until about 2 o'clock in the morning, deciding which names we're gonna lay off, because our budget was in such poor shape, way, way back in those days, so that been 15 years, 16 years ago, cuz it was just prior to me coming on council, and, you know, there are some tough times, I, you know, as a councilperson, or, or as president of council, but, uh, he said, just persevere, understand why you're doing it,